We're now live, Chairman.
Well, good afternoon. Welcome to the Pensions Board. First item, apologies. What, Dave Vickers?
Yep, Dave Vickers, apologies.
And Dave's not here because his wife's cousin, and he's had to go to Essex for a funeral today. And that's the only one, as far as we know. Any declarations of interest? I'm an active member of the... I'd better declare an interest now as well. My daughter recently started employment at Lincolnshire. And so she will either be or will become a member of LGPS. She started staying in January. I mean, she was a teacher in the Teachers Pension Scheme, but in special education there, in LGPS. Minutes of the previous meeting, held on the 9th of November. Shall we just turn the pages? So that's pages five. I think page one. Page two. Page seven, I better say. Page eight. And page nine. Happy for me to sign those as a record? All agree? Yep, thank you. Should say, Matt, grateful for your email that you sent back in late November, early December.
Sorry, can we use the microphones, please, because it's recording?
That's fine, thank you. Just glad it clarified everything.
Item four then, Pension Fund Update. Is that you, Chair?
That is, yes. So, thank you, Chairman. So this is the standard quarterly paper. I'm just going to go over the key points. So the first one, paragraph 1.2 on page 12, reminding members who haven't completed the Pension Regulator's toolkit that it is required. Please say all board members have completed that, and it was raised at Pensions Committee this morning, both through the the Board Update Paper and again in the Fund Update Paper, the requirement that that needs to be done. There are still three Pension Committee members that are, have passed the deadline for doing it, and we have two new members that have until May to complete it. Section three on page 13 adds a new risk to the risk register. That's around the potential impacts of the outcome of the Government Asset Pooling Consultation. But I'll cover that in Paper 10 on the agenda. Section five gives an update on the Budget and Business Plan, and as will be covered in Paper nine, the 2223 accounts have now been signed off with an unqualified opinion. So that part of the Business Plan is now complete. Section six on page 18 provides the full results from the Pension Regulator's annual survey, attached to Appendix C. And the key highlights are just set out in paragraph 6.2. One point that I think is quite interesting in there is that only 8% of LGPS funds say that they get their employer contributions in on time every month. And then just finally, on section seven on page 19, that provides an opportunity for any questions from either the December or this morning's Pensions Committee meetings, with the agendas set out there for you. So that's all I was going to say about it, but I'll happily take any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? No? There we go, got any? Okay, what recommendation is that the Board consider and discuss the report, agree whether any action or additional information is required? So, received it, fine. Just one point, Joe. When is the next scheme return due? Is that any time?
The scheme return was...
I meant this one, sorry. The research report. They normally do this once a year, don't they?
Yes, I'm trying to remember when we did it.
It was...
Was it spring?
I think it was...
Was it late?
Feb, March, I think.
Yeah. I can't remember when the...
Yeah, between January and March.
Oh, right. So I would expect it to be the same.
Okay. Very good. Item five then, which I think is you, Matt. Please.
Thank you, Chair. So this is the report from West Yorkshire Pension Fund. Pension Admin Report, Activity and Performance for the period 1st of July to the 30th of September. I think the first area to pick up on is our key performance indicators, the KPIs. We've got a list here of areas that were met in this period. At first glance, probably too many, but if we look at them, perhaps there's some groups. The top one, Death Grant Set Up and Update Member Details, were just a handful of records that didn't make it in time. The bottom one, because of just sheer numbers, it's updating addresses and sort of, you know, low priority record upkeeping. And the death grant is self-explanatory, that was out of our control because it was with other funds. The inter-fund linkings in and out, that's a whole different story really, because the Government Actioel Department removed their factors required for these calculations and were slow to replace them. So the work had to be paused through the summer and the autumn. We have got all the factors now, but of course there's a ripple effect. We now have stockpiles. We're working on the older ones and business as usual concurrently. But I suspect, in fact, I know that these KPIs won't meet over the coming months because of the sheer volumes that we've got. Deferred benefits set up on leaving, yes, there's been quite a few, or an increase in those that need to be processed. But as always, I point out that we write to 100% of the members within two months, confirming they have a deferred benefit, which is the statutory requirement, and then we follow up with their benefit values as soon as possible. And because there are no benefits put into payment, you know, they are a lower priority than retirements and ill healths and so forth. So looking through the rest of the paper, membership just is slightly increasing. It's just on upward trend, which is quite nice to see, that there's new members joining the funds. I seem to, just bear with me one moment, I seem to be out of order. That's just two. Plans and all of that, five, four. I seem to have things right. Okay, that's a bit bad, sorry about that. Papers back to front. So we've got the graph there to show membership increasing. Member Employer Contact, point 3.0. We've tried to do something a little bit different over this period, because we were traditionally writing out to our members when we were completing some sort of administration, deferring their benefits, putting benefits into payment, whatever, and we were writing to them and we always felt perhaps we weren't getting quite enough responses back. So we now also send them by email. So you can see that our attempts, the work that we've put in has gone out, because we've sent 394 emails over this process, as well as 41 paper surveys. But we only had 12 or 2.8% returned, which was virtually all the paper, they were paper responses. We need to think about it. I don't think this is an era of concern, we're just trying to make it better. But it would seem, if you ever, I would do this. If someone sent me an email for a survey, questionnaire, and it's not linked to anything that I'm particularly doing at the time, I probably wouldn't open it, or I would leave it for a rainy day. And I think perhaps our membership is like that. We just need to consider it a bit more. Our employer training events are still being well-attended. And as always, we record those so that employers can go back online and watch them, re-watch them, or if they miss the event, can see it at their own convenience. Point four, Internal Dispute Resolution Procedures, or IDRP, it's our complaints process. We have a few complaints that are outstanding. So at stage one, and this is appeals against the fund, there was a complaint about a delay to retirement. This is about the AVCs. We did pay the minimum lump sum that we could, so the member did have some money. But because of the AVC and the way it can affect the overall value of the member's benefits, the basic pension benefits and any conversions could not be paid. It has been put into payment, it was put into payment in July, it should have been put into payment in March, so that's significant. And although I haven't got evidence of this, I haven't come across a prudential case where prudential did not compensate, so that would be my expectation. For the second one, 18th of July, Appeal Against Decision Not Toward a Partner's Pension for a Cohabiting Partner. Although this sounds harsh, the scheme prior to 2008 did not have benefits for cohabiting partners. So it's a straightforward no, it was declined, and it would be declined on appeal because there's nothing in the regulations to support such a pension. Stage one, Appeals Against the Scheme Employer, and we've got one here, Appeal Against an Ill-Health Retirement. It was referred to the employer to review. That was on the 14th of September. The employer has reviewed and turned down again, and a letter was sent out on the 17th of November. We haven't heard back from the member, so that's the current position there. There are no stage two appeals, which is really pleasing. We still have these ones with the Pension Ombudsman, and because they haven't responded, they'll remain on our reports. I don't know when we'll get a response. The Ombudsman, the new Ombudsman, can't think of his name right now, Dominic Harris. He was at the Pension Managers Conference in November, and he said there that they had a cyber attack, shut their computer systems, all software was shut down for two months, and I understood they had at least a 12-month backlog of outstanding cases, and that's grown because they couldn't do any work whatsoever. So I don't know when we'll get a response from these. Having said that, we've tidied these up. The member was unhappy that they did not receive unreduced pension benefits on ceasing employment. That's because the employer has said that this is an early retirement, or a voluntary lever. They did not leave on the grounds of redundancy or efficiency. And they are the grounds by which benefits would be put into payment without an early retirement reduction. So it would seem that the complaint may be against the decision of how they've left employment, rather than the award of benefits. Once that's tidied up, we will know which way to go with the benefit values. And the second one, last one here, is the member is unhappy that they weren't awarded an ill-health retirement. They didn't meet the criteria, so that's what we've put back to the TPO. Point five, Staffing. We have recruited to a senior finance officer post, but we recruited internally, so that means we have another vacancy on a finance officer. But we have recruited two new finance officers, and they've started on the team. In the Service Centre, we have six new pensions officers. Still have seven and a half whole-time equivalent posts that are vacant, and there are also two senior pension officers posts that are vacant. But we are on a rolling programme of recruitment, as you know. The technical team has now filled that vacancy with a member of our West Yorkshire Pension Board, so he's now stepping away from the Pension Board. And we've also had another vacancy advertised, and that closes on the 16th of January next week. We've had an audit from Bradford Internal about pensions and new lump sums, and the audit outcome was excellent. So there was no further improvements there. The budget information, I think, needs a revised sheet. I don't know if you're aware, but there was a slight error on this sheet, and there is another version that can be circulated, Chairman. The figures have been clarified. There are some overspends, there are also some underspends. But broadly, we are still on course to keep the costs under £19 per head at £18.52. And if that can't be circulated internally, I've got a copy that can do that as well. Okay. Five point four, the Shared Service Risk Register. I know that's contained here. We've gone through the risks. We think that they're still fit for purpose. We're happy that they're fit for purpose, apart from Risks Two. And that's part of this refresh, where the partners met in the autumn in London, discussed the agreement. I stately called a contract this morning, but was an agreement. That's now been rewritten, redrafted. And it's gone through my desk and the Assistant Directors' desk, and is now with Legal at West Yorkshire. And I do understand it's quite pressing to get that released, yeah. Refreshed Resource Plan is included. So obviously this is how we go into a portion resource. Not just deal with business as usual, but deal with McLeod, backlogs, all that sort of thing. That does get reviewed regularly. It will get reviewed this year, and I'd like to see a revised document at some point in the summer. Regarding regulatory updates, I suppose point six is the most important really. 1st of October, the removal of age discrimination became effective, new regulations were effective, commonly known as McLeod. We took the stance that to write to everybody independently might cause contacts and queries, but there's no further information that we can give them, that they there will be more information to come later. So the information for everyone, generic, was included in a winter newsletter, and that has been distributed. Web registrations are pretty good. They are still probably lower than where we want them to be, but they're generally going in the right direction, and there's some slides a bit later where we can see how people are actually looking at the portal, just to give us a flavour of the activity. And I think that's that paper. The appendices are attached, and I'm quite happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Can I just raise something that Dave has written? So I'll read it, rather than try and summarise it. "If I move forward to Matt's admin report, from my reading of the KPIs, there does appear to have been some improvement across most of the measures. But the direction of travel, the green arrows, do still show a declining picture. Appreciate there's been some recent appointments made to the teams, so relatively good news, here I suspect. I would also ask Matt for his wider take on the management of workloads, current and future, and how recruitment retention challenges are being addressed." Appreciate there's a resource in plan to tag, so hopefully this will be referenced during his presentation.
Right. Thank you.
Understand why I didn't summarise it.
Yep. Okay, yes. His point on the arrows, I think, is valid. We looked at this a couple of weeks, no, months ago. It's still fairly new. I think this is the second time we've brought this to you, so I'm monitoring. And I've already put a few comments and stuff back to the teams, you know. We're still achieving a satisfactory amount, but what's the trend look like, etc. And even when they're red, for example, the deferred benefits, which we don't meet. But that concerned me, because that was still down. So I acknowledge that. I haven't got an answer, but it's at a monitoring stage. We are aware when we're looking at that part. And hopefully that's efficient for the moment. And I think while it is green, that's okay. And we might, I suppose as well, I suppose we should say, this period with a lot of this stuff is a peak through the summer after ABSs, and that sometimes have a negative effect because we have a spike in work. So again, with the recruitment and the resource issue, that may be an issue why we get a higher peak in work and a drop in the metrics. What was the other part of the question? Was this all statement?
Well, appreciate there's a resort in plan to tag, so hopefully this will be referenced during the presentation. I would have been interested to hear more about the automation of processes.
Right.
This is an expectation. Maybe this is for another meeting. He did say that.
He did say that. I would touch upon automation. It has made a massive difference to some of the transfer work that we've been able to do, the GAD factors and the pausing of it. And I think it's taken us from something like 8,000 outstanding pieces of work down to two and a half, because we've been able to automate the process. So we'll still need more time on the automation, even where we've implemented it, because if we've got a process that's a partway through it, we have a case that's partway through the process, we can't apply an automation to that. So you've got a mix of automation and manual. We are looking at other things, you know, deferred benefits to be automated and things like that, and there is some clear development that probably gets discussed at the Collaboration Board. But if I make a note of that, and then we'll see what we can do next Pension Board, is that all right about the automation? Yeah, even if that's just a quick update in the admin report, we could add something like that in.
Yeah, just, you mentioned about, obviously, we need the new shared service agreement sorting for 31st of March. I understand that there are delays with Bradford Legal. I just wondered how that will be escalated to ensure that the other shared service partners will still have ample time for us to take it through our legal services teams, who are perhaps equally snowed under. This is obviously, we started this in September, we're now in January, and we've not seen an updated draft. So there is a concern that we're going to meet that 31st of March deadline.
Am I right in thinking there's a Collaboration Board meeting next week?
Yes.
There is, right.
And I shall raise it as well.
Well, I was going to say, I'll raise it with Eunice and Ewan, and if you bring it, because I honestly haven't got an answer, because I'm not close to Legal. You know, I've got it to Eunice, and we had conversations in quite good time, October-ish, probably late October. So, you know, they've had it now for at least a month, maybe two. Don't know what the delays are. Okay, but if I raise that, and you raise that, and then Collaboration Board can take that on. Right, okay.
Broken it. Oh, it is. On the Pensions Ombudsman, I think you could be waiting 18 months.
Thank you. I heard on the side of caution, it could well be 18 months, because, you know, if you've paused everything you do for two months, it's not a two-month further delay, is it? You know, because it's got that two months plus the work that they've come in. So, yes, I think they were very, you know, embarrassed Pension Ombudsman at talking.
Any other questions?
Sorry, just one other that I did raise at committee this morning. Just, it's really a question for the Board, but that can then obviously be fed back. This time, or this time last year, the new managing director, Ewan Miller, started at West Yorkshire Pension Fund, and we invited them to the March Board Meeting. And I just wanted to see, we spoke about it this morning at Pensions Committee, and they will see value in seeing him again and hearing how things have progressed on the topics that we spoke about last year, such as branding. And I wondered whether the Board would find it useful for him to be invited to attend the Board Meeting that afternoon as well.
Seems sensible to me.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else then on Pensions Admin Report? If not, a recommendation on page 99, Board Discuss the Activity and Performance of the Admin Service During the Last Quarter, which we've done. Thanks for that, and I think the next one is yours, Matt, the Data Quality Report, my favourite.
Thank you, Chair. Always slightly nervous when I talk about this. Right, so this is the Data Quality Report from West Yorkshire Pension Fund. So, we report to the Pension Regulator specific scores and accuracy of data. So there's two areas that we report on. Common data, which is name, for example, that any pension scheme would require, and then something specific to the LGPS. So the common data is currently, has an accuracy rate of 96.18, and scheme specific 87.68%. So not 100%, so obviously there are some areas to address. So the first one, missing addresses. There are many reasons why we can't contact people. They just moved away and forgot about us, or they don't want their pension, whatever it might be. But we spend a considerable amount of time trying to trace these people, whether it's tracing agencies, door-knocking, National Fraud Initiative, things like that. Tell us once. This time of year, or this period of the report, July to September, there is often an increase in these data issues, because we would have sent out the annual benefit statements, and particularly deferred annual benefit statements, and people have moved in the last 12 months and haven't told us. So I would expect this to be a spike over the course of the year. The addresses to reduce. Point 2.2 and 2.3 is a little misleading. We get monthly reports, monthly returns with data including pay. But if we have an instruction that somebody has left, we start up a process. And we start up that process, and then we record all the data that's been provided with us by a separate report, and then we defer or pay the benefits. That could take a couple of months. And of course, through those couple of months, the record is still active, but there's no longer pay coming in through the monthly reports. The system just picks up on that. So again, I would expect in the period we're looking at, which is traditionally one of the higher periods of retirement, you know, August end of the school year or the start of the next school year, I would expect that to be seasonally high there. Moving through 2.4 and 5, these were inherited. I'm not blaming the previous administrator, it's just at the time when they recorded these records, which would predominantly be deferred or retired, information didn't need to go on a screen to be able to be counted in a report. So it sits on a paper document that's at the back of the file, and we haven't got any software that can pull that data through. When we work the files, whether it's a deferred benefit into payment, or a retirement, or a pensioner that's died, we will look at that information, we will put it on the record. The thing to remember, particularly around pensioners, is that information would have been used in the correct way, and the benefits being paid are correct. This is just like a recording or accounting issue, you know, it's there, but we can't prove that it's there. 2.6, we realised that there was an issue with the report, and we've done quite a bit of rewriting and coding on this report, it's sort of fallen by about 600, 700. There's still 76 records that we're looking at. Essentially, this report is recording the crystallisation benefit amounts and assumes, so that's the values that are paid at retirement, and it assumes that there is an automatic lump sum, or at least it did. And of course, since 2014, there isn't an automatic lump sum in the scheme regulations. So where people don't commute even a pension to a lump sum, if the value is zero, it may record it as an error. So there's 76 to look at, rather than the 600 or 700, so that's much better, that's in control. Annual Allowance Calculations, again a spike, queries coming off the back of annual benefit statements. These will have been looked at individually, and where necessary, pension saving statements would have been sent out for those that were affected by the additional taxation. And the rest of these, the no-GMP stuff, that's all to do with, as I said earlier, about the records and the previous administrator. Data Improvement Plan, which is point 3.0. This is going to be reviewed this year. I mean, it sets out, you know, our requirements to improve data, record data, report it to TPR. I think broadly it's in a good place already. You can see the movement from June to November. It's gone up slightly, very slightly. But, well, perhaps treading water on scheme-specific. But I think it's in a good place, and when we review the plan itself, we may come up with further suggestions on how to improve those scores. Point four, the Pension Regulator Engagement. A supervisory engagement, and I still don't like that terminology, because it was voluntary. The Pension Regulator in 2019 stated that they like to find out more about local government pension scheme and its administrators and administering authorities. So they've taken a deep dive into, I think there was 10 authorities, and they, from the smallest to the largest, and those are the quite complex West Yorkshire Pension Fund because of the shared service and the add-on of FIRE, or the FIRE service. And it was quite, it was actually quite a good process. You know, they were open, they were giving us lots of good and positive feedback. We provided them with every piece of information that they wanted to, from governance documents to processes on retirement. We gave them access to the website. They had access to our Pension Board, they did attend that. And they have given us a few things. They think we can improve, you know, fine. And we're having further discussions with them over the coming months. But they've given us a rating of green, for good. It doesn't sound very exciting, but that is the highest award they will give. They seem to be very pleased with us. They seem to be very pleased with the... They seem to be very pleased with us, they seem to be very pleased with the feedback. We also gave them some feedback, for example, about how they might like to engage with funds. Just in terminology, you know, we have, they talk about trustees, but we have Pension Board members. So just at that level, we've sort of fed back and we have said that, don't mind engagement, but does it have to be supervisory, which sounds like it's mandated. So, and they were quite positive and they'd already noted that this probably would be helpful to change. So we had quite good two-way dialogue with them. That's the report, there are appendices there as well, any questions?
All right, on two five.
Point two five.
Yeah, where it says no national insurance contributions or GMP, is that critical to you?
No, sorry, I probably didn't explain that very, very well, but that is similar to those that are above because this is where we have got that information on the records at the back. And this again is something that would affect those pensioners. The benefits are being paid and if there's a GMP that's already been taken care of or accounted for. So it's not posted on the digital record on UPM, but it's there on a document and we need to bring. This was probably the main thing, that software that we talked about last year was going to rectify. I can't remember the value, but it was five figures, wasn't it? And there is still the potential that we have the capability to build this in-house. But with McLeod and Dashboard at the moment, we just don't have the capacity. So, and as the members are getting the correct values every month from their pension, it is that manual process of adjusting it as and when we work the files.
And GMP equalisations is not an issue for you?
No, I don't believe so, because we've actually, well, the GMP reconciliation.
Why are you too late for that?
Well, as I say, we've completed ours, yours is probably completed as well. So as far as I'm aware, that's not this issue. That this is simply about being holding that information on a digital record.
Okay. Something else? No? What else I've got to ask you? Probably not. So the recommendation is, the Board discuss the report, consider whether they wish to take any further action. Well, I guess we'll wait for the one in six months' time, keep your fingers crossed.
Yes.
I think Mark beat you up enough this morning on that one.
It's fine, if he doesn't understand, he should ask the question and we'll say it again and again.
Right, that takes us on to item seven then, the data analysis review. Are you going to give us a slideshow on this one?
So, I suppose if I just sort of go back to last year, there was quite a bit of discussion, I suppose, about, I think it started, you know, are people looking at their annual benefit statement? You know, it's the age-old question, since we sent them out, we don't know. We know when they're paper forms, they ended up in the bin, some did. Because then members rang us up and said, oh, I threw it away, I didn't realise what it was. But now we can put them on the portal, they're online. There's this feeling, which is not incorrect by the way, that we should know if people go in and look at them. So again, it's all about software capability. So we had this thought last year, we brought some slides to you, we thought, hmm, that's interesting, not sure about the value that we're adding, we'll bring it back next year, so here we are. So if we can go on to the next one, right. So what we're showing here is just our total logins. The blue line is for the shared service and the green line is Lincolnshire. Now, I wouldn't be too worried about the differences in the lines, but broadly, it's the same profile of the lines. So your membership is not out of step with the others, you know. Until twenty twenty, there didn't seem to be too much and then gradually, our membership seems to be a bit more interested in it. Could we go to the next one, please? This one's probably of more use. So here we're looking at, the green is everyone that has logged in since they had that annual benefit statement, nearly six thousand people. And on the blue are people that have logged in before the annual benefit statement was produced. Now, between those two, it's broadly about seventy percent of your membership, which I think is excellent. I'm not so keen about those that haven't logged in, but maybe they're just completely happy, they're not too interested in their ABSs, they're not on retirement age, who knows? But it's good to see that those that have been knocked out of digital communications, most of those people are at some point having a look at something to do with their pension in the last twelve months. So I find that quite encouraging, the next slide, please. And these are estimates as well, I'd like to see these go up and up. This, on the portal, scheme members can access their details and they can run an estimate for a normal retirement age, for example. But then they haven't got access to all of our calculations, they couldn't do redundancies or other things like that, but they could do an estimate of voluntary retirement. And then you can see that, you know, there's probably getting on for about four thousand different estimates have been completed by your membership. And what's good about this is just, that's four thousand less estimates that West Yorkshire have to process. So that means that we can deal with some of the bigger issues like McLeod, Dashboard, retirements, you know. So I think that's quite good and I'd like to see that and see if that is going up year on year. And the next slide, please. I quite like this one, I might not be that obvious, but what we've got, the left-hand, the Lincolnshire one are the three bars to the left. And the first one, fifty-five point five, that's the average age of your membership when they've looked at an estimate. The third one, let's go that, the tallest one, seventy-four point nine, nine, that's the oldest member that's gone in and done an estimate. Which is good, because the benefits must be paid by the time that they're seventy-five anyway. That's in the scheme regulations. So obviously someone's coming up to that age and has gone to see what their benefit values are. And I had a little bit of a smile when I saw that the youngest age was nineteen and a half. However, however, I had thought about that and I thought, well, I would assume that these are new joiners, these are young people coming into local government. The fact that they've made the effort to go and look at the portal and get an estimate bodes well for the future, because if they're looking at it then, they could be still working for us in twenty, thirty, forty years' time. And that would just really, that sort of proactivity will really help us in the long term, get everything on the portal, get everything digital, get everything automated. It was just, I mean, I know that doesn't mean a great deal, but I was quite surprised at how low that number is, actually. But I just, you know. So again, I think broadly you're in step with the rest of the shared service, particularly on the average age, you can see, I mean, it looks like West Yorkshire, they want to retire a bit earlier at fifty-five point two. But otherwise, all fifty-fives or fifty-sixes as an average age. Next slide, please. This isn't so positive, I'd like to have this in a different order really, but the green line shows how many people across the shared service, or sorry, I've got the Lincolnshire, are actually opting out of the e-comm. So I don't suspect these are nineteen years old, these are probably forty-nine or fifty-nine. And that's quite a lot there, it's, you know, we've got probably five or six thousand scheme members that have opted out. And across the rest of the funds, you know, we've got a lot that are physically opted out of electronic communications. And as good as the other one was to my mind, this is worrying because we cannot do anything with these people. They've said they don't want it, so they will have to have it in paper. Which was always fine, but of course the world is moving on and I don't know if we can revisit these people and ask them or encourage them to opt back into e-communications. Is that the last one? Yes, the last one. So again, the second time we've looked at this, it's interesting, well, it is to me. It gives a little bit of insight of what your membership are doing online. Is it relevant, does it add value, Chairman?
I guess that last slide is, as you say, worrying. That they've opted out of IT.
Yeah.
Just want paper.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Yes, please. Am I right in thinking that my pension is going to be undergoing a revamp?
Yes.
Because it is, having seen other civica users' online portals, it is still quite clunky and basic, not particularly intuitive, not particularly enticing. What's the timescale for that? And just two other points. I'd like to take credit for the nineteen and a half-year-old. As I do a presentation to our apprentices every year and push heavily, joining my pension. So I'll take credit for that one. And I've forgotten what the other one was because I was being smug. I'll leave that question with you about the online system.
I don't know much about it. So what I'll do is I'll go and talk to our Head of IT and see if I can get a little update, perhaps just a couple of lines of where we might be, and I'll get that emailed round. My understanding is that we are or looking to build our own version. Now, whether it's off of that UPM platform or it's something completely different, I really don't know. It's completely out of my comfort zone. But I think a lot of the things that you've said, we accept, not just as employees of the fund, but as pension members herself. So we want it to be more friendly, user-friendly, easier to use, get the estimates out. Perhaps it's where the journey starts for automation on a retirement, particularly if people are deferred. And of course, as we go down this journey, there's all sorts of questions about data security and these signatures and things like that, which is a really big debate, you know, from the LG down and for transfer processes and pension scams. So my understanding is we think we can do it better. So let me get an update, I'll just email to yourself, Chairman, before, just a couple of lines to see where we are on that.
Yeah, because there's a lot of emphasis now from the regulator and DWP on my retirement, isn't there? So I think you'll have to do it anyway.
Well, I think so, it also might go hand in hand with something like Dashboard. Because if they're coming to us from a digital platform, making inquiries online and we do have, you know, it could go, I don't know how these things work, but arguably if you're coming through, you know, on an online inquiry, you can go straight from, you know, Dashboard to a portal, perhaps then they get to administrator. You know, or maybe that just starts the process to get them, I don't know. But you can see why you wouldn't necessarily want administrator involvement, you'd want some automated process. So, let's see, someone get an update for you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? No? Nothing else, do you? No. Right, actions required, Board consider the presentation, discuss whether they wish to see any additional information. Well, I think we've asked you for an update on phase two, or mark two, whatever, okay. Which takes us on to item eight, and that's you, Claire, please.
It is, thank you very much. This is a new annual report, setting out activity with employers over the last twelve months. I think the Board will remember that previously we brought information just on contribution performance on a quarterly basis. We've now moved this annually and have expanded it to include additional information about our employers. The report has a recommendation that the Board consider the report and think if there's any further information that you would like to receive about our employers. As it's a new report, I'll briefly run through each section. Section two covers employer activity and during the period, we've seen eleven new employers join the fund, five academies, five admitted bodies and a parish council. We've also seen three employers leave the fund. Section three covers the timeliness and accuracy of contributions and supporting data which has been submitted to the fund. Employers are required to submit data and pay across their contributions by the nineteenth of the month following their payroll. Table two on page one hundred and sixty-six sets out the performance for the previous twelve months. And as you can see, late or inaccurate data is relatively rare and during the year, we haven't identified any concerning or worrying trends. The most frequently occurring issue is the late submission of data. And you can see from that table that this peaked in April, May and June. And this was due to a number of employers switching their payroll provider at the beginning of the financial year. And as you can see, over the summer, this began to settle down to more normal levels. If an employer makes contribution payments or submits data late, three out of six months on a rolling basis, they will receive a fine unless they offer extenuating circumstances. And table three on page one hundred and sixty-seven sets out the fines that have been issued over the period. And there have been nine of those. Turning to section four, this sets out detail on the work that's been undertaken by the fund and West Yorkshire proactively with employers. And this includes training and further information dissemination sessions. Over the previous twelve months, West Yorkshire has also focused work with employers on discretionary policies and volumes of outstanding levers. Further information on this is set out in paragraphs four point four to four point six. The final section of the report, section five, covers a review of the fund's data quality and this was completed by the Actuary following the twenty twenty-two valuation. Their report at whole fund level is attached to the report at appendix B. The data from the Actuary has been reviewed by fund officers and has been used to target employers for membership audits and further support and training where their data quality was viewed to be below standard. That was all I planned to say on the report, but I'm very happy to take any questions.
All right, no outliers in terms of payment of contributions, they're all odd ones here and there.
We had a large number of maybe uncorrelated occurrences during the year. We had one multi-academy trust who struggled for a number of months with their payroll provider. They have subsequently moved on from that payroll provider and their performance is improving as a result of that.
Peter?
I'm, as the Board will know, I'm a business manager in a primary school and I know from dealing with our payroll provider, the first we became aware of any issues was when we got a letter basically threatening us with a fine. Is there, when you are communicating with the people who are paying the contributions over, is there a requirement then that the affected employers should automatically be made aware of at the earliest opportunity?
Yeah, when we, when employers are contacted for any late submissions of data, that will be made to, that should include the school. But we're very much at the mercy of the data which is provided by you and your payroll provider in terms of those contact details. So the strategic contact, finance contact and payroll contact. So if you feel that you're maybe not being made aware of those issues soon enough, then I'd encourage you to review who those people are to make sure that comms are going to your payroll provider because they need to know what they need to do, but they're also coming to you as well.
Thank you.
Can I just add to that? One of the things that we raise normally when we have annual employer meetings is about the contract management that we would expect our employers to do of their payroll providers. So getting monthly confirmation that data and contributions have been paid across on time and correctly and doing spot checks themselves. One thing we have found is that a lot of employers unfortunately will will deem to have passed all responsibility across to their payroll provider. And a lot of them don't do any monitoring. So we did produce a list of expected questions that we thought employers should be asking their payroll provider on a regular basis to ensure that as the entity with ultimate responsibility, they have enough oversight of what their payroll provider is doing.
Anything else on this one?
I think it's just probably worth noting, I know LCC is only one of two hundred and fifty whatever employers in the scheme, but just to let the Board know that the Serco payroll team will be coming back in-house from first of April. LCC have just announced that they've recruited a new payroll and pensions manager. So hopefully that will improve contacts. I think there's not been issues with performance, but it might improve. I think there's not been issues with performance, but it might improve contacts, I think.
I think it's worth some context for LCC. In terms of the monitoring of contributions and data, we don't have any concerns with that at all. I think in terms of that, LCC Serco's timeliness in responding to other matters such as completing levers forms, that is more of a challenge. But there is frequent and established engagement between West Yorkshire, Serco and LCC. And hopefully, as that relationship comes closer, then that should be even easier. And I believe that those staff are now actually sat in this building as of this week.
So can I just ask you on that one? Which payroll system will they be using? Will they be using the Serco one or?
So we've been using, even though Serco have been providing the payroll service, we moved to new ERP from April, which is Business World. So Serco have been using our system and that will, the system's not changing. It's just who the staff are employed by that's changing. So the processes and the system remain as they have been since the 1st of April. The staff will just be employed by Serco and headed up by a head of service. The staff that were employed by Serco will be employed by LCC and we have a new head of service for that area employed by LCC.
Very good.
And if I can just add to that, just to ensure that we get that relationship right from the start with that new head of service, I've got a meeting diarised already to meet them, to just set the expectations. Because exactly as Claire said, I think getting the money paid across and a return in is not necessarily the problem. The issue sometimes is what's on the return and then also just the responsiveness, probably due to resourcing issues that hopefully will now be able to be addressed as it comes under LCC management. So as our biggest employer, I think West Yorkshire are very, very happy that it's coming back under LCC. So we've also been discussing with the employer relations team there about the changes. But I think it's a very positive outcome.
Which director does it fit under?
Under Andrews, Mr Crook.
That's what I'd like to hear.
And Richard Toon is the new payroll manager.
Oh, I know Richard Toon.
I'm pretty sure most people know Richard Toon, so yes, plenty of experience.
Because he worked here and then went to the health sector.
He transferred over to Michel and then went to LPFT, so coming back, yeah.
Right, anything else on this one? No? So recommendation, the board consider the report. If there are any further information they would like to see about employers within Lincolnshire Pension Fund, the answer to that is no, but we've had an update on Lincolnshire. Very interesting. Next item then, item nine, annual report and accounts. And I guess this is you, Claire.
It is indeed, yes. So the paper brings to the board the external auditor's audit completion report for 2223. It has a recommendation for the board to consider the report and discuss the feedback from the external auditor that's included within their document. The Pension Fund received an opinion on the accounts and annual report in the week before Christmas. And all audit work in relation to 2223 has now been concluded. Copies of the external auditor's audit completion report and their follow-up letter is attached to the report at appendix A and B. I think the point worth flagging to you from this is, as in previous years, the movement between the original valuation of unquoted holdings from year end, from the draft accounts to the final accounts was noted and had an impact of just under eight million pounds for this year. I don't plan on saying anything further. I'm very happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Well, as you well know, I am absolutely delighted. Because, as I mentioned this morning, we must be in the top 5% for getting their accounts signed up. I mean, the number of authorities that have not got their accounts signed off. And I've been talking to Tony Crawley at the, whatever it's called, the Audit Appointments, whatever it is.
PSAA.
That's the one, PSAA. Yes. I mean, the whole thing is just, well, unless the government step in, it's going to be shambolic. And I just worry that, you know, given the current state of the government, that this will be a low priority for them. And I can't see anything being done before the election. And there's supposed to be legislation to show that some of the 15, 16 and 17, 18 accounts can be at least signed up. Anyway, we're in a good place. So well done.
When does the contract with Mazars end? Are we tied in for so long?
The appointment wasn't made by us. It was an appointment made by PSAA for us. The conclusion of the 2223 piece of work was the end of our relationship with Mazars. We have a new external auditor in KPMG from the 2324 year. We've already met with the partner for that. Work is starting on that audit now. And the partner from KPMG has agreed to come and speak to you in March, if you would like that as part of the committee. And I think, Roger, you've already indicated that that's something you'd be very keen to do.
Yeah, I think, yeah. And I think it's a very good appointment. KPMG compared with Mazars, I'd better not say too much.
And there'll be an opportunity for you to pick up some of the things which have been disappointing with the previous relationship to make sure that KPMG are aware they're hearing those from officers. But if they can be emphasised by the board, then I think that'll be helpful as well.
Who will be coming from KPMG? Do you know?
The partner is Rashpal Kangura. He, I think, has got quite a long career with KPMG and worked for the Audit Commission prior to that. And has been a partner at KPMG for a number of years. So he's got local government experience from that, including some pension fund experience. The team below that are maybe less experienced in terms of public sector. But that might be something that you want to ask Rashpal when they're here.
Which office? Is it Birmingham or?
No, they're based out of Manchester.
I thought it was, I thought you'd be having Naga, I can't pronounce her second name, Thibault or something like that. Obviously not. Anyway, she might be the senior part.
They're working on a county by county basis, so I think that will work in to our favour as well. Because at the moment, a number of the district councils aren't picked up by Mazars. I think we've got one with GT, one with EY and the police with EY as well. I'm hopeful that kind of, because some of the pension fund work, the assurance work that needs to be done for the pension fund then feeds to all of those bodies, that having that county by county relationship should maybe make some of the work a little bit easier and maybe push the Pension Fund and the County Council up the pile to get the work finished on a more timely basis.
Yeah, I got the impression when I was talking to Nadia that they've not just won the odd one. They've won quite a lot of pension scheme accounts in relation to the government. So, anything else on this one? No? Recommendation, board consider the report, discuss. Another wrong one. I turned it over too fast. Let me go back to it. Board consider the report and discuss the feedback from the external auditor in the completion report. Well, all I can say is excellent, excellent news. Item 10 then, Joe. This is the DLUHC pooling consultation. What a mouthful.
Yes, thank you, chairman. So yes, the Department of Leveling Up Housing and Communities.
Thank you.
Consultation and Transition Plan. So this is just updating the board on the response from the government following the consultation that was undertaken over the summer on next steps on investment. Having considered the 152 responses received in which we as Lincolnshire Pension Fund put hours in within the deadline, the government decided to implement the proposal set out in the consultation with really no material changes. These proposals were to accelerate and expand pooling, to increase investment in levelling up and also in private equity. They have indicated their intention to develop the associated guidance by the summer. And they have previously stated that if an individual fund doesn't meet the policy intent, then their position as an administering authority can be removed through existing powers. Those powers have been there, however, since the first lot of guidance back in 2016 and none of that has been enacted. Key areas from the consultation are set out in paragraph four, with narrative following each area on the sector's response and also the fund's position. There will be a requirement to have a transition plan, setting out how each asset area will be pooled. And the plan for the fund at a very high level is set out at paragraph 30 on page 227. Generally, though, the fund is in a good position with pooling. We've already pooled nearly 60% of our assets with plans already in place for the remainder. The new requirements around reporting, though, will cause quite a lot of additional work. I think the most contentious issue is the government's expectation for fewer and larger pools over time, whether through pool mergers or funds moving pools. Responses from the sector did set out the potential issues with this in terms of the governance, the costs and just the distraction from day-to-day business. However, government are still keen for this to happen over the medium term. To try and ensure we're ready for any of this, we have already started conversations with Border to Coast about how this could be managed to ensure that any changes are beneficial for the partner funds. I wasn't going to say any more, but I will happily take any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? I've got a couple, Joe. I guess there's a bit of a sarcastic question really, but do you think that, is there anyone at DLOC? Do they understand pooling and the time scale for investments? You know, particularly the liquid investments? It is a loaded question, but I'm just interested in Joe's answer.
I shall be good. So we have, there has been the same individual at DLOC that has been working with funds, which is Theresa Clay, who's been working there since it first came into being in 2015. So one would hope and expect that there was a reasonable understanding of all things pooling.
Yeah, okay. I just think that, you know, their timescale of saying, you know, that when everything done by 2025 is just unachievable, end of story. And my second question, and I mean, this is a, I daren't ask the question this morning at the Pensions Committee, but is there a real risk that the government will do a Royal Mail and take the whole 300 billion? And then, you know, go on to pay as you go, et cetera, et cetera, like they did with Royal Mail?
It's something that's been raised numerous times. I think the overall LGPS funding position now at well over 100%. I haven't, I think the section 13 report, when that comes out, we're probably 120%, 110%, we're well over 100%. So that does make it look like a really ripe apple to pluck. I don't know if that's the right analogy, but there are many issues though around that because the funding level is just a representation of certain assumptions. It's never the, it's not a true picture. It's made up of guesses and estimates as to what the cost of liabilities might be reaching out 80 years plus and then just discounted back. So it will never be right. There are also all sorts of issues that government has on the unfunded schemes in the increasing costs and how that gets paid for. And that's far less transparent than the LGPS is now actually understanding what that unfunded liability is for them. I think it, I think it's been mentioned numerous times. I think Treasury would perhaps like it, but we have to hope that those that actually understand how it works will refrain from doing that. But I can't crystal ball gaze. I think at the moment, there is that push just to, you know, if you were starting from a blank piece of paper now, you would not have 86 LGPS pension funds, 86 administering authorities and admin teams and investment teams. So I think there is scope for rationalisation. I think the, in my opinion, the first place to start looking at that rationalisation of funds would be the London Boroughs, but that again sits in a difficult position politically. So I think there are plenty of other things that could be considered first that would make more sense than just taking the assets and liabilities on. But I have no idea, as I say, every few years it comes up again and it's a suggestion that that may happen. But I think the, you know, pooling has moved incredibly quickly in a lot of areas. But I think Lincolnshire, being part of Border to Coast, gets a very different story and is in a very different position to a lot of other funds who are not, do not have the same relationship with their asset pools that have not committed to making it work and committed to pooling. So I mentioned earlier at committee that I think, you know, we are in a good position. Border to Coast is in a good position. When the government talks about the model pool, it's basically saying this is border to coast. So I think we're at a lot less risk of having things thrust upon us than some of the other funds are. But what government might do over the next few years, what Labour might do if and when they get in, I think your guess is as good as mine, to be honest.
Anything else? No? So the recommendation is the board consider the report, discuss DLOC's consultation response on the fund's transition plan, which we have. Thank you. So item 11, training needs. So this is an opportunity to share any training that board members have undertaken and feedback over the past few months. Anything to offer? Well, I've got something to offer in that I'm delighted to say that I've finished the hymens. The whole, the whole thing. And I think the best model is the current issues one. That's the one that I got most satisfaction from. Oh, thank you very much. What, the code? Yeah, the code, the new code. Did they put that on?
TNFD, Task Force for Nature.
Oh, Nature. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Financial disclosures.
I've got three quarters of an hour on that next week with LGM at one of their webinars. Try and understand it. What else have I done? Sorry. Not a lot really in the credit repo, at retirement, credit market outlook, various things like that. So more private sector related, I guess.
Can I just ask, when do we need to send you our training? Is it for the financial year end?
Yeah, I think I normally ask in March if you can do it for the, for the year that ends. Yeah, yeah. So that would be lovely. Thank you. I will just say, for those who haven't finished Lola, if you want to attend, we've got a training, a group session arranged for Thursday, the 15th of February, starting at 10am in here. It's a session which the committee asked for back in October. But if you haven't completed that and you want to come along to that session, then you're very, you're very welcome.
But if I can just, we haven't yet decided what modules we will be covering. We're going to, we've got some time in the diary to have a look ahead of that and see what modules look most relevant that we can go through in the time period that we have. Because obviously, we won't be able to go through the whole thing. But we're hoping that for those that haven't yet started it, will just be a toe dip in to see that actually it's not that difficult. It is, just takes a bit of time. The questions at the end are generally quite simple and easy to pick up. So, but yes, everybody's welcome. But as I say, at this point in time, we will, we probably won't decide until the actual day what modules we will cover. But if there's any that you've already covered, if you let us know, or we can see what's been covered and we'll have a look at what the least covered modules are.
and we'll have a look at what the, the least covered modules are.
So recommendations are requested to share information, which we've done, note any conference training feedback, which we've done. And has any further training required in the next few months? Well, you've mentioned the, the February one. Okay, so I think the last item, record time today, must be Dave. I'll tease him on that one. The work programme.
So it's just the normal opportunity for the board to look at the work programme and that's attached to the report at appendix A. If we look just at the next meeting in March now, we've got the normal fund update, admin update and six-month temporary bank accounts update. I think from the conversations earlier, we'll invite Ewan along to the board meeting from an admin perspective. I've not finished yet. So they're, they're just the recurring items. We'll also bring to the meeting the annual review of policies, the business plan and budget setting and the report which will kick off the annual report and accounts for twenty-two, twenty-three, so any changes to standards, the accounting policies that we'll bring. And then it'll also be an opportunity for you to meet the new engagement lead from KPMG. Very hot off the press, we'll also have the TPR Code of Practice information, which has been on the agenda for a number of months, but can now, we can now actually bring something back to the board for that. So hopefully, that's picked up everything that everybody wanted on there, but if there's anything else, then please just let me know.
Anything else? Can I just, just float another, another couple? I wouldn't mind seeing internal audit from Lincolnshire to tell us about any, you know, any work they've done overseeing the Bradford audits that have been, if they could, if we, if we can fit it in, of course.
Yeah, I mean, can we, can we maybe look at the agenda for the next couple of meetings? And roll that in, March often turns out to be quite a busy meeting and if we've got two visitors, it's because of the policies and things, but if we've got a couple of visitors, if we think that there's sufficient time, then happily we'll do that in March. If not, if, if we could maybe roll that forward to July, then that might be helpful.
And the only other one, and I guess this, I was just thinking of the new, because it's a long time since we did this, the review of the IDRP procedures and, I mean, is Eunice still involved?
He still oversees.
Really?
Yeah, he oversees, I say, i- i- it's light touch mostly from, from Eunice because we've got a whole team on it now. But do you want a report on IDRPs or a training with about the process of IDRP or both?
Well, me personally, I'm not worried about the training, it's, it's the process really. I think Jo and Claire know that I've, you know, kind of slight nervousness over the independence, how it looks that, that West Yorkshire do IDRP stage two, because they're the administrator. So, you know, I mean, you all know, Matt, in the private sector, you know, there's normally a little body of trustees do it. And, and, you know, ask for loads of questions and additional papers, et cetera, et cetera. So I wouldn't, I was rather hoping you'd tell me that Eunice wasn't involved.
Sorry, I will get this right as we end the meeting. He, he, to my understanding, he doesn't get involved anymore in case by case. When I say light touch, he oversees it, we have the technical team that will deliver. He might look at a case if it's contentious. But I do get your point because any IDRP across the LGPS anywhere has the potential to be conflicted because an administrator or an administering authority tend to make the determination. But it could be the dominating admin authorities, HR department, or it could be the head of investments, it could be the head of the pension fund. Any of those roles are arguably conflicted because it could be about their own employees or their own scheme members. So, yeah, and I think in the regulations it says, as long as there's no previous, previous involvement with the case, the adjudicator is, is free internally to, to look at those, the IDRP.
I dare say this, I just think the private sector do it better, end of story. Because it's, it is so, it is much more independent of process.
I think I'm, I'm agreeing with you, it's, it's potential to be conflicting in LG, but, but, but we work within the regs. But yeah, let's, let's go and have a look at, at a process, we can put a report together and bring that back in March or July, whenever you, whenever you want it, really.
No, that's great, thank you. Anything else?
And just going forward, once MacLeod, once you start finalising the payments, are you going to update us on how that, you know, how many members have had an increase or?
Well, I was thinking how, it could be a long answer. I think the short answer is I'm already considering an update at some point. But I think we have to realise that with MacLeod, although there could be thousands in scope, there are going to be maybe as small as dozens per fund that get an uplift on their benefits. And those benefits might not yet be in payment because they could still be active members and it's what it says on their annual benefit statement. So I was thinking, and I haven't thought it through, but maybe this time next year or the December board, there might be a, a twelve-month review of how MacLeod has been delivered rather than the numbers. But I'm, I'm open to suggestions.
Yeah, it was, it was more people that were in receipt of pension now as to like how.
There will be some, but again, it will be teeny tiny numbers of people and potentially teeny tiny uplifts to their benefits. Because although this is a big deal, because of the accrual rate in the current scheme being so much better than the older schemes, the chances are that the, the, the combination of old and new combined. Exactly right, so, so we could put something together because I do think once we've had twelve months of, of delivery of MacLeod, so October this year, we should be reflecting and see what lessons have learned and with direction of travel and how many, yeah, and just perhaps feedback from scheme members. So it's sort of there in the head, but, but so I'm quite happy to take advice work together on this, I don't know what you think, Jo.
I think, because going forward, it is just part of the process, the calculation will be done in both ways. So going forward, nobody will know, oh, this is MacLeod, it will just be, this is the better of the pension, so this is what we will give you. I think what might be interesting, and there was some work done looking at how many members potentially might be impacted when we first started looking at MacLeod and the numbers were tiny. But just perhaps whether, if there are any material changes to pensions, that might be something that is useful, but as I say, not just because of the accrual rate, but because of where inflation has been versus pay awards, there are going to be very few and far between where it's going to be impacted. But I don't know that there's a huge amount of benefit in looking at that going forwards because that is just the new way of calculating pensions. But looking backwards, but perhaps just for material changes, because if someone's getting two pounds extra a month, it, it's not a concern on liability wise or, or probably for the individual or anything. And it will only ever be a positive uplift, so our members will be happy if they are impacted because it will only ever be positive. But just in case there were any that were large, that might impact a small employer, liability wise, et cetera, I think that's really where, as a fund, our interest might be. But as I say, perhaps we'll, we'll work with Matt to see what might be useful as an update. And one thing that might be interesting is just how much interest has there been from scheme members? What sort of questions are getting asked, just because that will help identify, has the comms been useful? Have we explained it well enough? And there has been standard comms produced by LGA, but I think that might be a more, a more useful learning point perhaps than how many scheme members has it impacted? Because we know from work previously done that that is going to be very, very small.
Just, just on that point about LGA, I spoke to Stuart at lunchtime and he confirmed that the, the comms group have just approved that they will be writing MacLeod statements for those that are in scope and out of scope to go on annual benefit statements this year. So again, that message will continue and that's probably what we'll look at later on this year.
Anything else? Recommendation, review the board's future work programme, highlighted activity for inclusion in the work programme, which we've done, very good.
Thank you, and if you're happy with those additions, we'll take the programme away and slot those in, in the most appropriate time so that they're picked up in the next sort of six months-ish.
Fine.
Thank you.
Well, anything else, any other business, which is not on the agenda, I know. Well, declare the meeting closed at three-twenty, if that's the right time, Thomas. Thank you very much. Must be our shortest.